I don't know if we'll need it up or not, you know, because they all have a copy, but...
Okay. I mean, normally, there's like a file and the only thing was in there, so I just double-checked. I just opened up Laura's, so we'll just go right to this.
Then we can just minimize that?
Yeah. So this is what they'll work off of?
Oh, okay.
But if you had like a separate presentation, I can...
It's not a presentation, it's just a spreadsheet.
Oh, okay. I know, but in a minute, right?
Going.
I know, right?
Yeah.
But it says you have the weekly team. And we need to by the time these concerts happen.
Having two bands is really good.
We have to change, so like... That's very true, and it's all over life. Yeah. You can donate to family fan. Two of the cards are our little new band, third is our mascot.
Oh, yes. I've got. Can we take two more? Please. Okay, transportation.
Donate our family's hand. Hey Mom, wanna come to Louisville with us?
We're not springing along.
If I could, my mom would drive us down there too.
No, it's easier to walk. We're like very next to convention. Do you remember last year?
No, my mom, she can drive us down there. She didn't say no.
Come on, you gotta put on a band last year. I was videoing Lily. I'm wearing a solid all the time that teaches the live.
We're sorry. That did happen. But it was a fun curve. The horror stories, it was an accident.
That's what happened to me. It happened.
Did you guys laugh on the bus? They didn't tell us anything? At the bus meeting? They were stuck. We all sat here, we were all angry. How did it work? Yeah. We had a big shirt on it. And Olivia dropped my skills with a fitness response. Yeah. We had a rollover chatted. Yeah, it's true.
Makes it all work.
It was so many habits. I always get it wrong, I can say four things, I don't better.
That's nice.
You got like a minute, honestly, or half a minute?
A minute. We have people in this town who would do it. Call us on a technicality. Here he comes.
Did you get it, honey?
Yeah.
Good evening, folks. This is a public meeting of the West Bend School Board, Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted in each school building, the entrance doors at the ESC, and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also given to the Daily News, WBKV, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. Deb, has this meeting been properly posted? Great, thank you. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, motion carries. We have a packed agenda for tonight, and we're gonna start with a lot of neat recognitions, so I'm gonna start with Principal Ralph Schloss.
Thank you, everyone. Is Olivia McLean here? She is not. I'm gonna talk about Olivia, though, for a couple of minutes. Olivia is the recipient of the Herb Cole Excellence Scholarship. That scholarship recognizes student leadership, citizenship, school and community involvement, and academic achievement. In addition, students are evaluated on their ability to clearly articulate goals in each of these four areas: future educational goals, personal life goals, community, society, service goals, and career goals. Students who receive this scholarship literally compete against the best students in the state. The foundation awards $10,000 scholarships to 100 Wisconsin high school graduates each year, so it's very competitive. We've had a lot of winners over the years, by the way, at both West and East. West Bend West is honored to recognize Olivia. For this very deserving honor and recognition, she will be attending Brown University in the fall. And if you're not familiar with Brown, it's an Ivy League school, so congratulations to Olivia. I might as well stay up here. Next, I'm gonna have Patrick O'Connor come on up. For those who don't know Patrick, Patrick is one of the two new assistant principals at West Bend West High School this year. For 18 years, I oversaw co-curriculars and clubs at the high school. I passed the mantle over to Patrick this year, so I wanted to bring him up and just have him stand beside me as we recognize some students today. The first recognition we're gonna do is National History Day, and I'm gonna have Jackie Schmaltz, West Social Studies teacher, come on up and talk about that.
Hello. This was our first year ever doing National History Day, and it was so much fun. Who thought history could be so much fun? But I had wonderful students that competed, and we weren't sure what we were getting ourselves into, but they did such an amazing job putting together a documentary on the Cold War with a very optimistic spin, which I was impressed by. And they are both here, well, two of the three of them are here tonight, so do they get to come up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Come on up, ladies. These are the two of the three that I'm bragging about, and they did just an amazing job. I know they don't want me to make them speak. They did enough of that at the competition in Madison, so we had to find a really unique way to put history together. They utilized a lot of primary sources as well as secondary sources, and had to create their own unique spin on the past. And I think these two were the two that did the bulk of the research, and then Justin, who isn't here, did a bulk of the technical stuff, and it was just amazing. I'm so proud of them, so next year, we'll do it again. Hopefully, I can talk them into hopping on board. Oh, I'm sorry, no, I did not. Liesel Myers and Libby Wilcom, and Justin Scherzer, who's not here. Wonderful students, we are lucky to have them.
Next, we're gonna talk about the state Spanish Pronunciation Contest winner, Olympia Wondrok. I'll have her come on up, and I'll have the Spanish teachers talk about that event.
My name is Shelley Krieger, I teach Spanish at West High School. Olympia has been my student three of four years in high school. This was actually her first year participating in the state pronunciation contest. The Spanish Pronunciation Contest, called the Concurso Oral, is sponsored by a national organization called AATSP, the American Association of Teachers of Spanish and Portuguese. And for several years, we hosted it here in West Bend at the high school, passed it on to a couple different schools in the Milwaukee area, and now it's back with us for the last, maybe, three or four years at Badger. My colleague Janet Jackson there co-coordinates this event with Sarah Ruiz, who was a former teacher with us. Olympia participated in Narración Memorizada, or Poesía? The poem, she memorized a poem, and it's kinda like a forensics meet, but all in Spanish. And as a senior, she was able, after she earned her first, to qualify for one of 10 $100 scholarships that our state organization provides. And as a side note, the AATSP organization as well, teachers who are members and have their students participate in something called the National Spanish Exam, allows for scholarship money as well, and Olympia earned a bronze. There's gold, silver, bronze, and then honorable mention, and that qualified Olympia to apply for a $1,000 scholarship through the organization that I belong to, and I am holding the paperwork here, and we'll be sending it in tonight. So I'm very proud of Olympia, she's a wonderful young lady, very deserving of scholarships and awards, and a bright future at Madison.
I like to often talk about how we are a comprehensive high school. There aren't very many high schools around the state that offer as many opportunities as ours does for students to get involved in a variety of things. And the next thing we're gonna talk about is Skills USA. And I'm gonna have some of our teachers come on up and talk about the students who participated in some competition for that.
Hello, I'm Mike Bentall, I'm the Skills USA advisor at the high school. Just a little about Skills. It's a partnership of students and teachers and industry working to ensure America has a skilled workforce. Skills USA provides educational programs, events, and competitions that support career and technical education. At West Bend, we offer 36 different competitions that students can compete in. At the state level, we had three students that got fourth place in Team Engineering Challenge. They're Maddie Zottner, Cooper Holbrook, and Eva Luba. We had two students placed third at State, Aubrey Valley in Screen Printing, Nathan Zick in Woodworking Display. And we had two first-place finishes in competitions. Our first one is Andrew Hayes, Amni Hough, Frankie Bright, and Kelsey Nowak. They won Broadcast News Production. Last year, Andrew and Kelsey went to Nationals for the same thing, they placed sixth nationally. And then we had Thomas Miller, he placed first in Power Equipment Technology. Two years ago, nationally, he got third, last year, he got first, so he's going back to defend that first-place national title. And we will be headed down to Louisville, Kentucky, the last week in June for that competition, and hopefully, we'll bring back some gold.
The last unit recognition tonight is gonna be for West sophomore Samantha Hall. Samantha, would you come on up, please? There you are. And I'm gonna have Karen Wysocki come on up. Karen has been the longtime choir teacher at the high school. She retired. Dragged her out of retirement, and she's gonna talk about Samantha's honors and what the State Honors Choir is all about.
So, this is Samantha. I got to meet her when I came back in March, and I have to say what a talented young lady she is. She went to State's solo ensemble this year and received scores in both her music theater and her district solo. And at State, too, she received ones on both of her events, and the judges were just raving about her voice, and I have to agree with that. So, very exciting, very exciting to watch the talent come up. So, the State Honors Choir, if you're not familiar with it, it is sponsored by the Wisconsin State Music Association, it's for band, choir, and orchestra, and we've had students every year that do audition for it, and it's a very rigorous audition. You have to prepare a Class A solo, preferably in a language, you have to do a sight-reading test, which is not easy, you have to do pitch matching, rhythm matching. I've been judging honors choirs for many years and was also involved in the Honors Project for two years as the choir accompanist, and I have to say, it is one of the most phenomenal experiences I have ever been at. Even I learned so much, and it was just one of the highlights when I was doing that. So, it's truly an honor to be selected to Honors Choir because it's through the entire state of Wisconsin. There are only 50 females in the SATB Choir, and 85 to 90, that varies, in the Trouble Choir. So, hundreds and thousands of women are applying for this, and very few get selected, so to be selected for it truly is an honor. And you are going to be in the Trouble Choir. Okay, so she will be attending a really intensive four-day camp. Soon as, almost as soon as school gets out, she'll be going up to Green Bay to attend that camp. They get college-level pieces, eight parts, 16 parts, it's amazing, all these different languages they've never been exposed to before. They're expected to be able to sight-read that at site, and away they go. They have four days to learn all the music. They will come back as a choir in October. One of the highlights of the Music Teachers Convention is going to the Honors Concert and watching them perform, so I'll be presenting there this October for my college class, so I will get to see Samantha perform, which I think is really cool. So, congratulations.
I just wanna thank the board for the opportunity tonight to recognize these students. We could come to every meeting and do this. We have so many talented students at East and West High Schools, and again, it's just a wonderful honor for me to get up here and introduce them, and they're very dedicated and talented advisors, so thank you all.
Thank you.
As a note, we'll be expecting you to come every board meeting and give us all this great information.
All right, we're gonna turn it over to Dave Hamelman for some special teacher awards.
Thank you. The West Bend District has been honored to have the support of the Ross family for 47 years to award four outstanding teachers annually with the Ross Educational Foundation Teacher Award. We have worked closely with the Ross family to develop the award process. The nomination process begins in late winter for eligible staff. The criteria includes evidence of exceptional teaching ability and the judgment of their professional peers, the parents, community members, grades five to 12 students, and administrators. Key criteria for this nomination includes items such as being effective in communicating enthusiasm for learning in and out of the classroom, to introduce and develop varied instructional resources for students, providing individual differences in abilities, actively participating in developing, updating curriculum, working outside of the district in areas such as scouting, recreation, church, establishing rapport with students, and making classroom activities meaningful to daily life. Eligible nominations are processed by a committee made up of the prior year's award winners, bearing the responsibility to select the new award winners. So, the people I'm introducing you tonight will be the people selecting next year's awards out of the nominations. Celebrations are planned and awards delivered during the first week of May, which is Teacher Appreciation Week. I have four people to present to you tonight that we're all very proud of. The award winners are, first, Sheri. Sheri Bame, where is Sheri? There. There you are, right behind me, thank you. Come on, come on, come on up here. Thank you, make yourself feel, okay. Sheri is, or these people too, okay? Yes, you can just walk around, okay. Sheri is... Okay, Sheri. Can't stand if you want to. Sheri is, works at our Head Start facility at Hartford, and this is the first time ever that the award has gone to someone who actually works outside of the school district boundaries, but within the county, because this is the first year, it happens to be, that we are responsible for the Head Start process in the county, but outside of the boundaries of the district. So, at Head Start, and Sheri, 17 years, correct, been with the district, all right. Sheri has been an integral part of Head Start for over 10 years. She comes to work every day with a positivity and a can-do attitude that is contagious. In that same vein, because of this and her ability to be a great listener, she is able to build a wonderful rapport with both staff, students, and parents alike. Never afraid to roll up her sleeves and jump right in, she helps staff to feel that they are not alone, many times supporting staff from beginning to end of a challenge. As a teacher, Sheri is a natural. The district is deeply fortunate to have Sheri here as a teacher. She represents the highest human relations for all staff, families, and children. Sheri, thank you very much, congratulations. Stay right there, please, okay. Next is Mr. Lou, Michael Lewandowski.
Yes.
Social Studies, very good. East High School, employed for 21 years, absolutely, that's amazing. Michael, known by college and students as Mr. Lou, has an incredible passion for teaching and catering to the needs of his students. He is devoted a generous amount of time to making sure that his students get the help they need in order to succeed in life. To his colleagues, Mr. Lou is supportive, open-minded, and well-balanced. He is a collaborator, often known to discuss strategies to enhance his craft with other teachers in the district. In the classroom, he makes sure that learning opportunities are personalized by constantly adjusting his curriculum to fully utilize available technology. After a long day of school, he will finish his work in the classroom and make his way down to the gym to work the clock at home basketball games. At the end of the year, he spends a great deal of time writing a graduation gram for most, if not all, of his students. It is evident that Mr. Lou has a passion for teaching and truly cares about this community. Mr. Lou has taught many countless hours about history and about life. He's a team player, a dynamic leader, and a professional who wins the respect of others through his integrity and desire to bring best out of students. Mr. Lou, congratulations. And next is Sheri, Sheri Pease. Sheri?
Yes.
You can dance, you can stand, you can do whatever you want.
I think I'll stand.
Okay, you can just stand right there, that's very good. Sheri's a school psychologist at Silverbrook, she has been employed for 29 years with our district, 29 years of service to our students and to the community. Sheri is truly a gift to Silverbrook, without her, students and staff would be lost. She always has a focus on the success of all students. Sheri is a positive role model, a wealth of knowledge, and is always willing to give up her personal time to help a student or a staff member. It doesn't matter the time of day or how busy her schedule is, Sheri is devoted to making Silverbrook the best learning and working environment. She works hard to gain the trust of students with clear, concise language that makes sense for them. As the PBIS Tier Two choir leader, Sheri communicates new information constantly, as well as shares out current data for the staff. Sheri's also a key member of the Emergency Response Team, which was the first in the district to become Project Adam certified. And if you're not familiar with what Project Adam is, it's the CPR courses on abilities that the district is able to use, and we did it through Children's Hospital here, so very good, you're able to spearhead that. Sheri's positive attitude radiates off of anyone that has a pleasure to work with her. She's a true treasure to Silverbrook, the students, and to our district. Congratulations, Sheri. And last, but not least, is Melinda, Melinda Sippel, is grade six, Silverbrook Intermediate School. See the difference between high school and middle school, Greg? It's good we didn't have elementary, or you'd be, well, no, we won't do that, okay. Melinda, Melinda is 13 years, I think I mentioned that. The definition of exceptional teaching, collaboration, and mentorship. She was a special education teacher for 12 years before switching to a regular education teacher this year, teaching both science and reading. Although she's no longer working as a special ed teacher, Melinda continues to attend monthly Strive Meetings, a program she helped create and implement to ensure the success of Silverbrook teachers, Silverbrook teachers and students. In the classroom, Melinda uses multiple strategies and techniques to meet the diverse needs of all her students. Melinda puts in countless hours before and after school and on weekends. She is constantly planning and preparing engaging activities to teach curriculum and standards. Melinda is actively involved in several committees at Silverbrook, including the Leadership Team. She also meets with students before school for a book club to help them develop a love for reading. Melinda truly excludes everything this award stands for. She is creative, supportive, and tailors her teaching to follow the students' individual needs. Her dedication to staff, students, and the school body sets her apart from others. Congratulations, Melinda. It is remarkable to say, this is a 47-year-old tradition, and that the Ross family is not only responsible for this award, but for teachers, award for teachers, but also for 42 years, they have sponsored substantial scholarships to high school students. Our community is fortunate to have the continued support of the West Bend School District for our students and staff, and I will say, our community is extremely important to have people like these four people right here. Stand up and cake one more cup, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Congratulations to four of our finest. Folks, I've handed my stuff over to Nancy. I am not feeling well, I thought I could get through a meeting tonight, and I don't feel like I can, so I am gonna excuse myself and go home. So, carry on, sorry.
Okay, let's hope that Joel gets better quickly. We are gonna move on to Staff Support Awards, so I guess I will do some reading. I don't have my glasses, so you're gonna have to just bear with me, I apologize. So first, we'd like to recognize Wendy, and I never know if I say this right, Lemons? Is that right? Thank you. Wendy is our registrar at Silverbrook, she's been employed with us for seven years. She's a self-starter who creates a culture for students, staff, and the West Bend School District community that is welcoming, safe, and fun. She goes the extra mile to ensure that Silverbrook is an amazing place for children to grow. Immediately upon entering the counseling office, Wendy is there with a smile to greet you. She strives to be innovative in how to improve upon the work she and the counseling team does. She is a professional who starts to create an ideal learning environment, not just within the classroom. She is a woman of many talents, lending her crafting and creative skills to organizing projects for students in the Guatemalan Craft Corner. Wendy has donated countless weekend hours to the Winter Guard program, go Winter Guard, woo-hoo, with sewing uniforms, organizing trips, and getting involved in whatever needs to be done. She is also dedicated to being a forensics coach and member of the Sunshine Club. Wendy treats each student regardless of their counseling needs with friendliness, compassion, and occasionally, a few life skills. She helps families register at Silverbrook, leaving them with a lasting impression of how much their student is cared for and thought about. She is one of the reasons why Silverbrook is able to provide such amazing experiences for staff. for staff and students. So, thank you, Wendy, and we have a token of our appreciation. We were expecting a dance, like the last people. Color guard skills, anything? No, no. Okay, all right. All right, okay, we'll go with that. Our next recognition this evening is for Darlene Rell. She's our breakfast coordinator, food service rotational worker, and she's been employed with the district for 19 years. Darlene's longevity and dedication to the school nutrition department is a true asset. She is a woman of many hats and wears them all with pride. Darlene is the trainer for all new employees. She is patient and slow with them and is able to see their strengths and weaknesses so she can tailor her teaching to best fit their needs. Darlene has very high standards and is meticulous at details. It's because of her that our employees do their job in a consistent manner. When something is askewed, she's the one to jump in and correct the action to keep everyone doing their job in the manner they are trained. Darlene is also the breakfast coordinator. She... Pardon me. In this role, she ensures all documentation related to breakfast is kept, communicates with the manager on needs related to breakfast and milk, and she provides suggestions and feedback on the menu. She is truly loved by all of her breakfast kids. She knows them by name, and they love that she treats them with respect. She is the smiling face to the beginning of their long day. Darlene is dedicated to the school nutrition department. She is dependable, always on time, and works extremely hard. It's because of all of her wheels of the school nutrition department work smoothly and independently. The final outcome is the high standard that the department strives for. Thank you, Darlene. Come on down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nobody wants to talk. We'll see. Well, we have one more, perhaps. Dale? Come on down. You're the next contestant. All right, this is Dale Young. Did I... Oh, thank you. Inventory-receiving school nutrition, and he's been employed with our district for six years. Dale is the inventory guru. Everybody get that? That is a cool title. Okay. He takes pride in making sure that all the inventory is first in, first out. He's extremely helpful, making sure that all the product that comes in from our vendors is acceptable and the best quality that it can be for all the kids that we serve. Dale has a great way of prioritizing in order to get things done as efficiently as possible. He has many good ideas for better ways to organize, downsize, and be efficient. His suggestions ensures that the kitchen is always ready for the day. Besides being a guru, he is also... Here you go. Man of many talents. He's also the plumber, the electrician, and the muscle, and the all-around Mr. Fix-It guy. He has helped on the delivery truck, he has cleaned floors, taken out recycling, and helped in many other areas in the school nutrition department. Dale always asks how he can help. If given a list of duties, he will get them done. He comes in every day with a smile on his face. Never once has he been negative or had any sort of issue. He is extremely dependable. The school nutrition department is grateful that Dale chose to do this as his retired career. So, thank you, Dale. Come on down.
I think...
I just gave you a dead phone.
Oh, well, you could send us a video if you'd like. We'd play that then at the next meeting. So, I think the Ross Education Award winner set the bar pretty high tonight, so I think everyone else is a little nervous about having to speak or anything. Okay, it looks like our next topic would be our update on high school events. So, hit it, ladies.
Good evening, everyone. So, AP testing is still going on. I'm finished with all of mine, thank goodness, but everyone is still going strong. I have friends that have some all-day tomorrow, and I just give them props for doing that because I don't think I could do it. But, yeah, hopefully all of our hard work is gonna pay off in July. I'm super excited to hear. This afternoon, I got to hear some amazing musical talent. This was the last little step for graduation. Other than that, we're pretty much putting our foots down, and we're all done. I'm so excited for this to all be done. I just have a little more to write in my speech. So exciting. And then, we are also sending out our final transcripts, so that is very nerve-wracking. Hopefully, my college still wants me. Our second annual grad walk is coming here at the end of the month. We worked out the kinks, and we hopefully have it all down this time. We are excited to see our amazing teachers that have geared us in the right direction to become who we are and what we are today. And afterwards, we're having a little celebration up on the football field, and I'm so excited for that, to see all my friends together and laughing and having fun. And then finally, our scholarship awards ceremony went really well. I was so astounded to hear all of the amazing things that my fellow classmates have done over the years, and they have earned these well-deserved scholarships, and it just astounds me how so young we have made such a change in this world already, and I'm so excited to see where we're at at our high school reunions. Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm gonna talk a little more about athletics and Paige did, I guess. So, with the school year coming to an end, there are still many things to appreciate, and we need to keep going. To start, athletics are doing exceptional. All four track teams are making their mark at their meets. And the West Girls 4x2 continuously places at every meet, so that's something to be very proud of. Our trap team is also doing very great, making their mark in their meets. East Boys Tennis won 6-1 over Slinger the other night, and then East Girls Softball won a doubleheader against Whitefish Bay, 10-3 and 15-3. So, on behalf of those athletics, they are doing outstanding. Along with that, the Athletic Banquet for Seniors is actually this Wednesday. Aside from athletics for clubs, Choir is holding auditions for the Rivace for next year this upcoming week. Piers for Piers is calling all freshmen, sophomores, and juniors to join the club for next school year and encourages anybody that is looking to help better the school to join. And finally, Prom is this weekend, and the theme is A Night in Paris. So, I don't know if anybody still here needs tickets. You have to be in high school, but they're in the bookkeeping still. Thank you.
Hey, ladies, just for the audience and for some of our new board members, could you just... Because I think it's such a cool event that you get to do, the grad walk. Can you just give us like three minutes of what that is and how great it's gonna be?
Sure. So, we all get to put on our cap and gowns. Oh, I've already tried mine on. So exciting. But we all get to put it on, and we are put on buses, and we get to go to our elementary schools and our middle schools and see all of the teachers, and hopefully they still recognize us. I know it's been a little while for some of them, but, yeah, we get to go do that, say hi. All the little kids come out in the hallway, and they come and say hi and wish us luck. And then we get to come back to the high school and walk and see all of our classmates, and it's super nice to get to see everyone and like get to... I've earned my way to be a senior. I've earned my cap and gown. I'm finally here, and to see everyone supporting me and all of my friends that have earned it too, it's super great and super fun. Do you have anything you wanna add?
You covered it.
All right. I'd like to add that I don't think you realize how inspiring you are to the little kids that see you, and also all your former teachers really enjoy seeing you as well.
Yes, I know. She's right over there. She was my volleyball coach in middle school, and she definitely left an impact. But I have baby siblings, four, five, eight, 12, and 13, and I know that they all look up to me too. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. It's a fun household. But I know they all look up to me too, and it just... It makes my heart so warm every time they see me and every time they come to my orchestra concerts, and it's just something really great to do, and I can't wait to see them do it and support them in all of their decisions they make.
Awesome. Thank you so much. All right, so we are gonna move on to our Assistant Superintendent Report from one Laura Jackson.
Thank you all. Nice job, ladies. To build on what our student representatives have said, Paige and Brianna covered it very well, but the class of 2018 is graduating shortly. And this class of 2018 is a very unique group. Some of them were born in 1999, and some of them born in 2000. Those born in 1999 had the great claim, when they turned 10 years old, to be able to say they lived in two different centuries, three different decades, and were only 10 years old. And it's amazing to see that these students are here. When we look at that era of the 1999 to 2000 and thinking about where we were at that time, well, as adults. Nobody else. So, they did just have their scholarship night, and that was a very important evening for the students because those receiving the scholarships, it takes... Some of them got full scholarships, some of them got portions. It makes a dent in what they are putting out in order to pay for their further schooling, whether that be a two-year college or a four-year college, or whether it be the start of multiple degrees for them. Every little bit makes a difference, and these scholarships were all donated by the community. And there are other scholarships that students receive from universities and things. Those are not included in this night. This night is scholarships from our local community and for our... Some of them were the military scholarships, and just amazing to see them. There were 10 new scholarships given this year that had never been given before. 185 students received the scholarships over the course of the evening, and there was a total scholarship fund that was... That students received of $727,350. That is three-quarters of a million dollars. That's amazing. So, again, just really, our community is really supporting these students in going forward and carrying on their lives so that they can come back and really further grow the West Bend community. It's exciting. So, graduation is coming on June 10th for East and West High Schools, and our seniors are proud, but they are finishing strong, and they have a lot going on right now from concerts and AP tests and really wrapping up their impact on the West Bend School District with a pretty little bow. We... This week, I mentioned this before, but it's... We're now here. Saturday is the Chalk Walk, Talk the Walk. And this is a great opportunity for people to come and see an art demonstration on the sidewalk. It's an exhibition, it's a competition, it's all of those things. It is this Saturday, and it's between 8:00 AM and 3:00 PM. It occurs between Shopko and Coles in West Bend, and you can come and see the artists doing their work right there. And it's just rain or shine, it will go on. Colors might be a little more brilliant if it's raining, and then fade quickly, but it will go on. Project Adam Karen Smith Award. So, Karen Smith had been a dedicated member of the Project Adam Board for a number of years before she passed away as a result of cancer. This award is given each year in honor of her memory to someone who has really had an impact. And this year, Amy Brager, one of our school nurses, received the Karen Smith Award at Children's Hospital, and what an impact she has had. She was the... How we got our district got going in the Project Adam certifications. And so, just to wrap it up really quick, Project Adam is not only CPR, but you practice your response time. What is every detail of how do you respond in a sudden cardiac emergency? How long does it take to get help? How long does... Is the use of the AED proper? How long does it take to get supportive services there? So, Amy coordinated that for our district, and if you recall, each of our schools is now certified and a Project Adam certified school. Outstanding. Jackson Elementary had an update they wanted to share, two brief points that they wanted to make, but really impactful points. On April 27th, the Jackson School students were out there partnering with the Park and Rec Department in Jackson in order to plant trees, spread the mulch around so that the growth happens and they stay healthy, and then cleaning up the park in Jackson. The students and the Rec Department working together to beautify the community was an excellent partnership. They have also partnered with the PTO on a school carnival each year, and this year, that school carnival raised nearly $10,000 to support student activities at the elementary school in Jackson. And so, that is outstanding. Silverbrook Intermediate had a busy, busy month. They had their annual Loyalty Day Assembly on April 27th, and during that assembly, students really learned about the importance of the flay from Commander John Klimas. They have... To hear about the impact from the commander is... Really opens up the students' eyes and helps them gain a better understanding of a symbol that they may have taken for granted, that they see every day but may not know really the meaning behind. So, that was something that was really excellent. The fifth-grade houses also had their wax museum, and they chose... Students had chosen a famous person to represent. They researched them, shared their knowledge on display, and then dressed up as them as well. The sixth-grade band concluded their year with their final concert and their annual band awards. So, it was exciting to have Killian McNulty and Owen Damcott recognized as their outstanding band students of the year this year. Then finally, Silverbrook, with the help of our high school students, created a video tour of the school so that parents, students, others in the community who want to see what it's like to attend Silverbrook will be able to view the video on their website. We will also have it... Our elementary principals also have access to that video to share with families as they're asking questions about the transition to Silverbrook, excuse me, for their fourth-grade students. Badger Middle School Points of Pride are actually going to be shared next week because they also had several students qualifying for state competitions, and we wanted to hold off on that so that they have the opportunity to bring those students here to be recognized. So, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. There were lots of great activities going around in the community to show appreciation for our staff. Everyone from the local communities, the PTO, the parents, and then the ESE staff and our board showing appreciation for the work that's done every day, day in and day out. And so, we just wanted to take a moment to say that, again, not all superheroes wear capes. Our teachers make quite an impact each and every day, and we recognize that and the important work that they do. Thank you.
Okay, we have come to the part in our agenda that allows for public participation. I don't see any sheets up here, but if someone would like to speak, or if you didn't have the opportunity to fill out a form and you'd like to do that now quickly, you can certainly do that. I see none, so we will move on. We're moving on to the consent agenda items. Yes.
Would you read the items under the consent agenda?
Certainly will. Underneath the consent agenda this evening, we have the minutes of the April 23rd meeting, the regular board meeting, and the May 7th special board meeting. We also have disbursements posted to May 14th. We have resignations, and we have ratification of contracts. That's all underneath Item A. Item B? No, just A so far. Sorry. Okay, so just so you know, we don't have our regular board docs up here either, so I'm really floundering. So, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, so we'll move on. Looking at Item B, we have... Underneath Item B, we have the second reading of the new board policies, 343.45, Start College Now, 343.46, Early College Credit, 343.44, Part-Time Open Enrollment, 342.3, Gifted and Talented Education, 342.8, Instruction of Students with Disabilities, Section 504 Plans, 411.3, Children in Foster Care, and 411.2, Education of Homeless Children and Youth. And it looks like we have Dr. Martin and maybe Sharon to talk us through some of these.
We did... We took the policies to committee... Oops, sorry. We took the policies to committee, was that April 9th, I think, and had a discussion on all of the policies. You had the first reading at the last board meeting, so I'm not sure if you want me to review what each of those policies are about, or if you have them in front of you. How would you like me to?
So typically, during the second reading, if there's no additional questions, then we just ask the board if there's any additional questions with regard to those policies. Are there any additional questions?
I have a couple of questions. So, this week, we've received some different feedback from our community in regards to the gifted and talented particular item that's on here. So, if you could speak to that, and I realize you're brand-new, so probably someone's gonna have to jump... Probably Sharon can maybe jump in, or someone else. I don't know. have to jump, probably Sharon can maybe jump in, or someone else, I don't know. But perhaps you could talk us through, what was the prior policy, or did we, did we maybe not have a policy, and this was a new policy for us? Also, how does this relate to other districts surrounding us? Is this a similar, or whatever?
We did not have policy, what's the number here, 342.3 in our board policy. So this is, the policy that is written is based on the recommendation of what a standard policy would look like from WASBEE, which is where this one is coming from. Some of the other questions that have come up are more about what would be an administrative rule under that policy. However, when we're looking at this particular policy.
Just pull it closer to them.
Just closer. Okay, sorry. When we're looking at this particular policy, we did not have that in board policy. So what, what was presented at the policy committee on April 9th is a new policy.
Our gifted and talented was covered through different policies like acceleration, and it was spread out. It did not have its own individual policy. And that's why it was important for us to get that in place.
It's also covered under some instructional policies, a variety of different places where it talks about ability grouping and differentiation and different things. But there was not one that was specific, specifically identified as gifted and talented.
Does it affect opportunities for students to enroll in honors classes or other accelerated classes?
This policy is looking at identifying gifted and talented students. Acceleration, honors classes, there are students who will be in those classes that are identified as gifted. There are students who will be in those classes who are not identified as gifted. They are two separate things. So this policy itself addresses identifying students as gifted.
So it would not specifically have, be, have anything to do with the enrollment in those courses?
Following up on the same policy, I think some of the concern that I heard as well has to do with the language in the policy that talks about identifying a plan for gifted education, including an identification and referral process, allowing for, allowing for and encouraging identification and referral based on multiple measures and multiple sources of information. And what exactly does that, does that mean? Now, this is the first, the policy did not exist in the past. So kind of looking at this going forward, can you talk about how would those processes come about? How does that, how does that process get developed if it's not laid out in the policy specifically?
Anytime you're looking at gifted education, DPI requires that we look at multiple measures. So that could be a variety of assessments. Usually, we're looking at something standardized so that we are looking at meeting a criteria, not looking specifically at an individualized student, not necessarily allowing subjectivity to come into it. We want to be making sure that when we're looking at all of our students, that every one of them has a fair opportunity to have access to those programming, which is why we look at multiple measures. We're not looking at just one assessment, but multiple measures over time.
So the localized data plus the nationally norm data, the combination of those are important. But what I wanted to also interject is, once we have a policy in place, then we will come, we will notify the board of the AR, meaning the administrative rule. So the administrative rule, and I'm just going to clarify, because some of our board members are new, the administrative rule is how does the administration plan to implement that policy? What are the steps, processes, and procedures? And so with this particular policy, we then will come forward with an administrative rule, once this policy is approved. And then that administrative rule will have a little more detail about our identification process, what are the steps in that, the idea that we, what does it mean, multiple measures? Now, my recommendation is always you don't list a specific test in the, well, in a policy, in an, because of the, what that means to change, and if the test were no longer to be available, what needs to happen. So in the administrative rule, we'll also indicate and have reference to the Gifted and Talented Handbook. That is being reviewed currently. Jennifer has been working on that with some, with some of our additional other staff members. And there are different drafts that have been in place for, over the years. And with all of this coming together in a new policy, we will obviously be revising that.
Just a general point, and following up with the concerns or feedback that parents gave, it was really separate from the gifted and talented program. I think it's important that parents recognize the gifted and talented is really 1.5 to 2% of the population. It's a pretty selective group. And we have to be very specific that that's included as part of our policy. Within the G and T policy, however, we do say that the, at the same time, it is the board's expectation that the district's standard curriculum and educational programs will be sufficiently adaptable, cover sufficiently wide span of rigor, such that they will be appropriate for and adequately challenged many students who are intelligent, creative, hardworking, and resourceful. So I think that brings us to the feedback when it comes to just selection of the advanced or the honors courses, that there too, we consider more than just one standard measurement, and get the teacher feedback and the parent feedback, and understand just the grit, determination, and work ethic of many of these kids who might not be identified as gifted and talented, but still benefit from the challenges that we can present. So because that's included within this G and T policy, that the board's expectation is we provide this type of rigor throughout, I would, I would hope that we would explore those options more. I know it's separate, but it's also included as a statement here. So I want to make sure that we meet those needs too.
And, and any criteria when we're looking at any of those things are looking at not just, like I said, not just our gifted students, but a wider, a wider span. So the, the criteria for being identified as gifted is different than what the criteria is for acceptance into some, or placement into some of those other courses. We also look at a universal, our universal curriculum. What are the ways that we can differentiate within that, excuse me, curriculum to make sure we're meeting the needs of all of our students? Within the GT policy, it also references making sure that we are following all of the other requirements about not being discriminatory. So when we're looking at any of this, whether it's placement or whether it's identification, we want to make sure that it's broad enough that we are addressing the needs of all of our students across the board, and that every one of them have that opportunity to be considered, which is one of the reasons why we look at those local norms and also those national norms when we're looking at gathering that data, is to make sure that we're opening that up to all of our students and not narrowing our curriculum, or narrowing our focus so much that we are, we want to cast our net wide, rather than narrowing and being a gatekeeper.
Would there be benefit to a separate policy, and I know this particular policy wouldn't be required by DPI or by state, but one that explains our considerations for honors courses, for advanced courses, just kind of a general, broad?
All of that would be part of an AR rather than a policy.
Okay.
And under some of our instructional policies, as we're looking at, as we've gone through and looked at a lot of those, those kinds of things, we'll come up with that as part of, of the administrative rule rather than part of the policy. And
One of the policies that is up for review the next time we have a policy committee meeting is our acceleration and retention policy. And so that policy speaks about when you accelerate a student by subject or by grade level. And our current policy is being reviewed, and so recommended changes to that policy will come to policing, the policy committee of the board in the near future.
So some of the feedback that we got from parents about these course selections, would you say that would be considered in the upcoming discussion regarding accelerated classes? Just making sure that we listen to our parents and their needs?
Right. So the, currently, the, the process for acceleration will be more defined within the, the policy that is proposed. The other expectation that would not be in policy, but would be in administrative rule, would be that we expect a long-range plan done when a student is accelerated. And the, along with those policies coming forward, grade placement in high school will have to be considered as well. And so we will have, that's, that will be a new policy for the board in the future. One of the things, Ms., Dr. Martin was talking about was the, the overall instruction, the tier-one instruction. And as you're talking about looking at differentiated instruction and overall instruction meeting the needs of our learners across the board, that is part of the focus of our summer institute in August, that all of our teachers will be invited to participate in.
One more question. Are, are we seeking to provide G and T programming K through 12? Like, every grade has that option? I think that was?
I, I think that that's always. I mean, when you look at DPI's policy, we're looking at identification K-12. It looks different at different levels. And it varies in, you know, on how people, how people view that. So part of coming together and looking at what the policy is, looking at what's in the handbook, is to define that more clearly. But yes, it's, it would definitely be something to consider K-12.
Any other questions? So I'm going to look for some clarification, because Joel is not here.
So they come to a third reading.
This will come to a third reading. So our next board meeting, you'll be up here again answering more questions. Thanks, ladies.
I just wanted to double check.
Sorry, Sharon.
That's all right.
Any other questions?
I have the policy on our identification of students who require a 504 plan, students who are identified as homeless, and children who are in foster care. Any questions?
Are these two, Sharon, like, the notices from the state must be included within?
Speaking of the 504, yes.
Well, the 504, the foster care, as well as homeless.
We have processes in place through my department for children in foster care and children who are identified as homeless by their school counselors. And then our 504 policies are being revamped based on the new information from DPI. And Sherri Pease, who was here earlier, is a school psychologist, is part of that team.
Sharon, were these policies ones that we were able to borrow from WASBEE, or did we draft these ourselves? Can you describe that a little bit?
Right. I use WASBEE as my template, and then adapt it to our district. And oftentimes, it's, it's pretty clear-cut, and has the legal references, which is nice. And then I'd adapt it to our practices.
Okay. Looks like we are moving on to our reports for the evening. Looks like we have a budget update. Hi, Karen. Hi, Tim Stelmacor in the back.
He's my moral support.
I know, we miss him up here.
So I know the agenda states that it's a 2017-18 budget update, but I just want to reiterate, as indicated in the executive summary that was submitted, that the purpose of this update is to provide you with an example of the new reporting tool that's forthcoming. So the focus at this time is not going to be on the numbers, as the analysis is not yet completed. The purpose of this new reporting tool is to provide you, the board, with the best tool possible to be informed and make strategic decisions. The format that we're using is the format that is recommended by the DPI, and it's utilized by numerous other districts. It allows the business office to focus attention on the most critical areas, and then it allows the board to focus attention on the most meaningful data with the key areas being highlighted. So if we take a look at the spreadsheet, you can see it. It's segmented by the different funds. So you can see the funds here in each area. Oops, doesn't go down. There we go. It's segmented by the different funds with revenues and expenses connected to those funds. It provides you with two years of actual data, the audited data, and then the current budget. The year-to-date column, you can see, is forthcoming. So going forward, the budget is typically approved at the end of October. Therefore, year-to-date reporting wouldn't become meaningful until around February. And that's because the tax revenues don't come in until starting in January. And grant revenue is filed in November and may not appear until January. So starting in February, you would see the year-to-date numbers, and at that time, it would provide meaningful data for you. Then if you look down at the spreadsheet, the intent is to, to highlight the items that really deserve your attention, and the items that you should focus on. So if you look at the, the first orange highlighted, this is, again, this is just an example with example data, but it depicts how the items that you will focus on will be highlighted. In this example, the first one that's highlighted, you see that 340 payments for services increased year-over-year. So that's something that you may question and say, why is that amount changing? And so, and then in the comments section, we would put, you know, why that, what's driving that? In this case, it's open enrollment, which of course, changes and varies year-over-year. If you look at the next set of data that's highlighted, so this is an area where you would, if you look at just 610 categorical aid, it drops significantly. And then you see 690 other revenue increases. And this was just a case of the per pupil categorical aid source being changed from 610 to 695. But again, that's just an example of how those areas that you would want to focus on will be highlighted for you to draw your attention to what's really important. If, of course, at any time you have questions on any of the other numbers, I would be available to, you know, to look anything up for you or do further research. So again, we just wanted to present you what this new format is going to look like. I think you're going to find that it's a better tool. It allows you to focus your attention on the areas that you need to look at. And then with all the staffing changes, we're still analyzing the data, but the budget status will be forthcoming. Any questions? Isn't it a cool tool? Thanks. All right. We're going to move on to item number 16, under discussion. It looks like Jen is here to talk to us about the 2018-29 district's strategic plan.
And I really think that budget tool is really cool. However, I would like to say I also have some cool tools to share tonight.
Oh, you people in your spreadsheets, let's go.
I know. It's so geeky and fun. So first of all, thank you so much for having me here tonight, really on behalf of the whole cabinet team. I just want to share with you that the work I'm sharing tonight has been a team effort. Dame Vross is not here tonight, but he's been instrumental in some of the work that we've been doing around our strategic plan. So for the 2018-19 school year, we wanted to start thinking about what areas do we need to focus on. Again, having our mission and vision really center our work in the future. What we've had up until this point is our areas of strategic focus. And you'll see on the back poster, on the back, where they say strategic direction, what we've come to know is that these are our buckets. I don't know where the word bucket came, but everyone refers to them as buckets. So these are our buckets that we focus on. So learning, culture, climate, community engagement, safe and orderly, and effective and efficient. And with that, what we have is statements that are really our long-term goals of what we want to establish in our system. And so what we've done is we gathered some feedback and done some planning as a cabinet team around, you know, what are our goals, and what is the best format for us to move forward? And so what we've done is taken the feedback and really done some alignment, and really, just, it's all focused on that continuous improvement. And so one of the pieces we wanted to do moving forward is really name our district plan, our district improvement plan. One of the reasons is that it aligns with our school improvement plans and just the naming, but it also allows the new superintendent in the school board and the cabinet to work on a long-term strategic plan that is maybe three to five years out. So having a district improvement plan for one year allows us to be goal-driven, but also that flexibility for future planning. Another piece is that our, our values are embedded into our goals. And so in recent board meetings, many of the board members have been sharing some of those values and just speaking to each of those values. Right now, on our poster back there, you see them listed below. And so what we have to share tonight is how we've embedded those values right into our goals for next year. Another piece is really taking a different look at the shape of those areas that we're focusing on. And so while we see them side by side originally, just having another look at them. One thing we wanted to also do is just redesign how we write our plans, so that we're making sure that we're effective and efficient with the things that we're doing. So when we first started brainstorming, we first started talking about, you know, that Maslow's hierarchy of need, and so making sure that our basic needs are met. And we also wanted to prioritize that student learning is at the top. And so this is the generic pyramid that we started with, with all of our conversations. What we've been working on behind the scenes is more of this full vision of this pyramid. So student learning, of course, at the top. And what we've done is taken the statement that we've had as our foundation, but we've embedded our values into it. So for the very top for student learning, our statement is we value learning for all, and for our commitment, so our commitment is to improve outcomes for all students. Under safe and secure, you'll see that we value our people and are committed to maintaining a physically and emotionally safe environment, so everyone can achieve their fullest potential. The one thing that we've done in the middle with the orange section is we've taken the piece of engagement and satisfaction and put them together. And so this year, what we've done is we've prioritized our communication. And so this year, what we've done is we've prioritized our communication based on the communication plan for our engagement in our community. And so what we've wanted to do is focus on their engagement and customer satisfaction. Not that their one's more important than the other, but we felt that they worked hand-in-hand. And so we've put together just one area for that. What we've been doing in order to have this triangle, what we've been doing is we've met at the cabinet team, but we've also met that Future Forward team that Laura had put together. We had a meeting. And so the cabinet team as well as that Future Forward team, we did a SWOT analysis, which is the strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats. And what we're going to use is the feedback from those groups to really draft our goals moving forward. But prior to moving forward, what we've done is created a revised template so that it will make our work a little bit more aligned, but also easier to report out what we're doing. The idea is that this becomes a living document. It doesn't become just this plan on a shelf. And so this is what we've worked on as far as for engagement and customer satisfaction. So each of those areas in the triangle would have this sort of template. We'd have this as a district improvement plan, but also each of the schools will have that. And we're working with the schools to align all of our goals. Some of the key pieces in here are that we have a goal, but also our strategic actions, very similar to what we have now, just a little bit different layout. But that we're also going to be progress monitoring our data, which we've been doing, and then having that evidence of reflecting of, were we successful or not? What do we need to do? So this is an overall sample of the template that we'd be drafting our goals and strategic actions in for next year's district improvement plan.
So Jen, on this, will each department then at the ESC do that? Or will each site, like, are you going to get to that? And I'm jumping ahead, sorry.
The idea really is, at this spot right now, we're planning for that district and then the schools' alignment. Now, it does make sense to have a department goal. And so I don't know that they would be as robust next year. We just need more time to plan as a team, but potentially, the idea is there for that alignment.
Jen, on the triangle, engagement and customer satisfaction, are we saying staff engagement and customer satisfaction? Do we need to be more specific with that? Because I think there is a relationship between staff engagement and student learning and their positive trajectory. But I just want to make sure that we recognize the value that our staff brings and an engaged staff is, but we don't say staff, so I just wondered what was the...
Yeah, so down below in our goals, what we would do is we would have a staff goal as well as if it's staff or students, whatever it is. So we would make it particular to the district or school level, that they would all have a goal in that area of both engagement and satisfactory satisfaction. And it may be parent satisfaction, but they would identify that. And one of the things that we've been working on is securing a vendor to help us collect that information.
So overall, is there feedback that this board will receive as it relates to the progress ongoing? Because I see you have metrics and charts and it's great to have them down at the division level. I love the approach. Sometimes it's a little bit tough or challenging to summarize it, but will we have some visibility into that?
Yes, and absolutely. This year, what we've done is just, I've reported out once and a lot of the things were on hold or a work in progress. And so I'll be coming back next month, actually, to report out on this year's strategic plan. So next year, what we would do is report out on this, but we'd use the same format. And then we'd also have schools join us certain times throughout the year so that you can get a feel of what schools are working on and how the work at the district level is aligned to the school level. But they will all have that format so that you could see that. And it will be an easy report to say, we'll color code it, red, yellow, green, and, you know, we'll have that, those measures marked off. Any other discussions about the district improvement plan draft for next year so far? So our next steps is we really want to continue our work on this and we're going to have another Future Forward meeting where we share this with them and then we present some goals and get their feedbacks for some of the goals that we're thinking of. And not only goals, but also those strategic actions, because they're part of that work too. So those are our next steps that are outlined here. And then we'll come back and share the final goals and strategic actions with the board.
I guess just more of a question for Laura, well, and for you as well. So obviously, everyone is aware that we'll be interviewing for superintendents this week. And we will have a new superintendent, hopefully soon. So how will, you know, I'm just thinking about as you're coming into this organization and, you know, you're the superintendent, but your staff has basically put together your plans for next year. So what's the thought process on how you'll bring that all together and, you know, sing kumbaya about it?
Yeah, I think a lot of it is really having some collaborative sessions, you know, together. One thing we thought about is we could sit back and just wait and, you know, till the person comes. But really, if our mission is continuous improvement, we have to continue to do that. And so there are some things that they may not be completely articulated and we can work through that with whoever that person is. But we'll have to have some collaborative sessions around that. And if we need to make tweaks, that's okay. But some of the things, like in the teaching and learning bucket, that's really coming from the CNI department. So that will be pretty steady and solid. But we just, we have to have some collaborative work section. So whenever you have that person on board, just let us know and we can start meeting. And so when we do bring this back, we will, you know, maybe something won't be completely, you know, the sentence may not be complete or the action step may not be complete because we want that person to own it and say, hey, we've identified this is a need. Here's the area where, whatever it is, that they would have that ownership and we'll work together with that person. But we also want to have a plan so that we can, you know, be prepared for next year as well too. So it will be a balance.
And with our needs being identified based on our data, based on customer satisfaction, information that we have from the past, and we have some things that we'll use going forward based on the fact that, when you did the strategic plan last June, when the board approved that, you also approved the expenditures that came with that. So we're working right now with our, for our data dashboard company and looking at surveys to measure some of those things that we don't currently have measured. But I think that the new superintendent will appreciate the dig down into the data and the, rather than, and the fact that we can sit down and go through that with them because I think it helps them get caught up to speed quickly.
I have one comment on, if I'm remembering the number right, 429 students leaving the district to go to others. As we get down to the measurement factor of even judging that, I would just suggest having that as a goal and would like to see that number. I know it's probably already in process for this coming year, but the number even for the 2018-19 school year, we'd love, or at least even me, would love to see that under 400. I think that is the overall judgment of even from our gifted and talented programs we have here and keeping students in there, to our trades education that we offer, to all the outstanding teachers and students that I can see that number coming down in the future, so.
Yeah, definitely plays, that would be in that student engagement, you know, making sure we have goals around all those areas, so.
Anyone else, questions for Jen? Okay, we will move into discussion item B, Pathways Charter School Contract. It looks like we have Laura, Jen, and some Pathways folks here.
Correct, I know Becky and Anton are coming up and so whomever else is coming, Diana's coming. And so at this time, we provided the board with the information, the different contracts for this discussion. We would like to ask you what questions you have that you would like to lead forward with. And I don't know if anybody else wanted to say anything upfront, but we wanted to start with your questions.
So one of my questions is in regards to safety. So obviously, we've been working a lot. I know Dave Ross is not here, but I know that we've applied for some of the grants available through the state. And I have some fairly serious concerns about the building that Pathways is currently housed in, that although I know it is right next to the police department, we all know that weapons can shoot quicker than a police officer could run. So my concern is that it's not a secure location. It's not up to the same standards of safety that our schools are up to. And I believe that you, or at least I had suggested that we talk to the police chief and get some type of comments from the police department in general. So I'm just wondering if that's been followed up on.
So there are a couple of things that we have done. I did not, I have some more specific questions I'd like to ask Chief Moeller that I did not yet have a chance to ask him. So that I will do. But like we, Dave Ross and I walked through, there has been, Becky and Anton have, we talked to them. They showed us where their shelter-in-place areas are and things like that. But like, that door is not secure and they have a person stationed there now. And there are some changes. There are also some things, Dave Ross is our district safety officer again, and that responsibility had left him for a while. But he is back in that position. And so that review of all of those, the procedures, evacuation sites, all of those pieces, he will do with Pathway staff over the, so that that's in place for next summer. What you'll notice in the contract is that it says at a location mutually agreed upon. And so we have had a lot of discussion about the location. Where, if, with Pathway's current location, we do need to make some modifications. This contract is a one-year extension. And looking at whatever location they will be in, it needs to be secure and we need to take some steps in that. So some conversation with the city, should Pathways be in that same spot, needs to happen because that, they have other tenants there besides us. So yes, it is not, it does not have the same security procedures as our other schools.
So when can, so just looking at the timetable here, because it's my understanding that this contract needs to be taken care of by June 30th, correct?
Correct.
So how will we get to, well, obviously, you're going to be talking to the police chief sooner than later. And you'll have some type of formalized information from him then in regards to that. So if Pathways, if the location is determined to not be at the same, or we're not able to get it to the same safety standards that our schools have, I'm choosing my words carefully here, what would be, what would be an option for, would we move Pathways then to another location?
That possibility exists. Pathway staff have looked at other locations. And so there's, the high school's one location. There are other locations in the community that could be available. And that, from a safety lens, they looked at it space-wise, not safety-wise necessarily, correct? Not with the same safety lens that a school safety officer would look at or the police perhaps. So that would need to be done if we, if that location was not, if it was not in the same spot that it's currently in. So no matter where it would go, we would have to look at that.
So not to beat a dead horse, but I'm having serious heartburn about the potential safety concerns there. You know, I really want to make sure that all students are, and all of our buildings are held to the same safety standards and that all students have a safe environment to attend school. You know, we realize anything can happen anywhere and it's our job to protect our students. So as a board member, I'm going to need to be assured before I'd be willing to accept any location that it lives up to the same safety standards that we have at the high school and some of our other schools. And being next door to the police department honestly means nothing to me in the realm of safety, so.
And the proximity to a police department does not, correct?
So I guess the general, excuse me, the general question that I'd have is, in the materials, and I appreciate that they are very complete, it looks like there are a number of drafts of contracts back and forth. Can you just generally comment on, is there, I don't see a joint draft that's being recommended by both Pathways and administration. Is that, is that a correct interpretation? And then can you describe next steps?
That is a correct interpretation. So next steps, Pathways has, Governance Council has been meeting we, before and after every joint meeting we have had. And the, you have the latest draft is the one that says 5:10:18 a.m. And so that, with that designation in the corner, that is the latest draft that we received from Pathways, excuse me, yes. And so, no, they're not the same. Essentially, there are a number of things that I would need to, like, I have to sign this and I cannot sign a contract that talks about state assessments that have not been in use for three years, that we would be administering those because that's a reflection on me professionally. So like the state assessment, things have to change. And so there are just some things in there that have to be revised as indicated on one of the other samples you have. And we have, we'll have to come back around that. Pathways felt like it was okay. So I got a message from, that was shared from one of the representatives of Pathways Governance Council. And that message stated that they felt like it may not have the same wording, but it's okay. I'm just saying I'm not comfortable signing when it states the wrong state assessments like that.
I'm sorry, in these attached documents, can you point to which one that might be for us so we can? There's a lot, sorry. Well, I finally got my board docs to work, so I'm pretty excited down here about that, so.
Perhaps I can say something while you guys are pulling up the documents. Diana Swolinger, I've been on the Governance Council of Pathways for, I think it's four and a half years. And I've been in the meetings with the Pathways Governance Council and some district staff. And while we've come together on some of the pieces, I think the general concern from the Pathways Governance Council is that there's a lot of changes that are being proposed by the district at this time. When the Governance Council is looking to do a bridge or a gap contract for one year and keep a bit of the status quo, knowing that there are lots of things the school wants to address and revise, as was intended, when we came up for a five-year renewal. We're supposed to be doing a five-year renewal right now, but there were a lot of components that the district didn't come back to us with as we proposed and put forward what we needed to with the contract. And so the process was delayed significantly. So this one-year contract is to give us a bridge to then get into everything that was intended to happen with the renewal of the five-year contract, with assessment, reevaluating the school, the contract, and whatever else may fall in that, and renegotiating from there. So there are a lot of proposed changes still in the most recent copy from the district that were not things that were directly discussed with the Governance Council and we can't agree with. Some of them kind of bump into our area of autonomy as the school has had autonomy in several areas, such as the budget, being one that was proposed by the district to give that district approval of the budget instead of Pathway's charter school approval of our own budget, as it has been. So that's just an example. So again, just summarizing that, we're looking at renewing the contract for one year, keep it as close to the original as possible. And during this year, get that assessment process done for the five-year renewal as it was intended.
Laura, could you speak to, I'm on this contract page, the one that we're referencing, page two, bottom half. So obviously, since I've been on the board, I know that we passed the financial literacy requirement for all of our students. So how will Pathway students, I see you have that added in. I see Pathways doesn't have that added in. That's a...
State mandate.
That's a state mandate. So how will you add that in?
It has already been added in here that we will have all of these requirements in addition to all other state statutes. So that would fall under the other state statutes that we would then be required under this contract as well.
But how will those students actually get those classes, is what I'm asking you. So will bus those kids, if you're at a different location, back to the high school to take financial literacy?
Right now, I'm exploring EverFi. It's, we were given a grant by one of the credit unions. It's an online module where they go through and they take the classes online. So that's something that we're implementing right now, but...
And the remainder of those standards, they would need to address in a specifically designed course. And so if that was going to be at Pathways, EverFi is a good portion of that. There's more to that requirement from the state. So they would look at developing that and having that in place for next...
So they would look at developing that and having that in place for next year.
Okay. So I guess what I'm trying to ensure is that students that are graduating from Pathways are being held to the same state requirements and, and our district requirements for graduation. So I just want to make sure that's covered in this contract, clearly.
And I would say if we're spelling out some of the graduation requirements, they really all should be there.
Well, like I would think something like financial literacy, the recommendation is that it's provided through the district's K-12. It's not just saying at a select year you have to have financial literacy. This is something that the state requires as part of the curriculum, K-12. And my understanding is it doesn't even have to be, it doesn't have to be the specific class as much as incorporated in some manner, be it a variety of different-
And you're talking about two different requirements.
Okay. So financial literacy is not K-12?
Nope, it is. But there's also, you're talking about two different state requirements for us as a K-12 system. An easy example of explaining that is the academic and career plan is, and academic career planning is required for students in grades six through 12, but education for employment is a K-12 requirement. They look very different. And that academic and career plan is a requirement under the statute for graduation. So those are two, they seem to overlap, and they do overlap, but education for employment and academic and career plans are different.
And we just passed the financial literacy half-credit required in 2017, December of 2017. So it's relatively new, which explains why it's not part of the 2013 charter. And I guess that's the other thing I want to be careful about, is not making a lot of additional requirements during this extension year, when we're really seeking to evaluate the past five years and create a strong contract going forward, which in my opinion, a lot of this should be grandfathered in, but not necessarily a segment of our evaluation of Pathway's program the past five years.
Yeah, the path, the current program evaluation is on the, based on the original contract, the original, the documents developed at that time that they, that Pathways, when Pathways was developed, we had the contract, we had the, their appendix that explained those things and how they were going to implement them, the, and, and the program goals through each year. And that's what the project, the evaluation is on. The goals that Pathways has set. So that's different. This, this contract going forward is not part of the evaluation.
Right.
Correct.
And so Pathways is saying this contract going forward has too many additional requirements for one year, or?
Yeah, a lot of the things that the district are proposing, the Governance Council as a whole generally agrees that there are things that should be addressed in the five-year contract. Not now. There's, we're coming up on a very short deadline here and pushing some of these changes in now that it's not the right time in our, from our perspective, as we look at again, a one-year contract extension. Keeping things as close to the status quo as possible, while we then give everything due diligence and don't try to quick-make some changes in, you know, one, two months to go and not really take a look at what is the future of the school, how is this all incorporated, and really put together a strong five-year contract that we all feel good about.
If I may, I would like to certainly support the extension, the one-year extension of the contract. And I think it is certainly wise to, you know, take your time and do due diligence to ironing out those details. I see this, you know, Pathway's charter school is fulfilling a need for a certain segment of students and we certainly want to reach out to those students and fulfill that need. So, so I'd support the extension.
It's not that I don't support the extension, I just think that administration clearly has some concerns, which are redlined in this contract. And I'd like to see administration and Pathway sit down again and try and come to a conclusion that everyone can feel okay about and then obviously look beyond this. But I don't see the safety one addressed in here, and so I really am going to hammer that one one more time. But I think this is for administration to sit down with, Pathways to try and come to some conclusion on some of these issues.
Is it possible to work on both at the same time?
Both by, you mean?
The one-year and the subsequent five-year, so that as you're developing the more status quo one-year contract, that's basically an extension. You can, instead of putting all of the, what you'd like to see in the five-year into the one-year, evaluate each of the items that the district is asking for and say, is this something that can wait until the five-year? And put it in that bucket, to go to Jen's verbiage. And then that way, we can have a more streamlined one-year. Is that, is that what you're really looking for? Is that possible?
So the, yeah.
Kind of like save it, do it now and save it, kind of.
Going forward, the, the, this summer, our teachers will get training in project-based learning. Becky is the only one who's attended the formal project-based learning training that they've had. So following that training, they have proposed some curriculum work that will help them to reimagine what they're, how they're going to meet the goals that are identified in the appendix or the Pathway's goals, but then looking forward. So this is just kind of a weird time because they also have the, the five-year review. So what Diana was speaking to earlier about the assessment, in the original contract, it said at the end of year four, Pathways would have a notice of what needed to be corrected by December. And then in December, the review would happen. There was significant turnover within this district and within Pathway's leadership that, that, for whatever reason, that was not completed. Coming in July 1 and lots of other things going on, I did not do a Pathway's audit. And we, and so that was, that's why we came to a one-year extension instead of the overall five-year. So the audit of the program is happening relative to their goals that have been identified now. That information I will need to bring forward and Pathway will look at what's on there to address that. So that, can they do that, can that be done simultaneously while developing a new contract? Yes, it can. The vision for Pathway, we are happy to provide support for. And Pathway's leadership really needs to think about what that vision is for the school. And so as far as just taking some of the things like, so the April 25th version is the one that administration had made the recommendations on. And so you have the different versions in there. And then, and as I, in the executive summary, like Pathway's brought back another one on May 3rd and we had discussion on those two again on May 3rd, and then the final one submitted on May 10th and that one. So you have those two. The, some of the notes that you'll see on the one from April 25th are really, we're in preparation for the meeting. So it'll say, it'll say revision suggested, and that just literally means a revision was suggested, but, and we discussed it at the time. And the, but where it says revisions needed, those are areas that needed revision. Like, so for example, you see the WKCE test on page three referenced, and then some other state assessments that were not ever developed and things like that. So the page four, the removal of the word charter just opens it up to other grants because they're not currently under a charter grant. And the, the page eight just had, we're not currently in a five-year grant plan. So that, referencing the five-year grant would not be in the contract. And so one of the areas of concern that Diana had brought up was on page eight, where it states at letter E, during each school year, Pathway shall prepare, approve, and submit to the district a proposed budget for the subsequent school year in compliance with the district policies and timelines. That they're proposing the budget, and then the line that I put in there, final approval of budget by district will follow the same procedure as other schools. So ultimately, those come, in, in October, the final budget is approved by the Board of Education and that is referencing that. So all schools in the district, the final budget is approved in October as part of the district budget at that time, and that's what that is referencing. We would not, the district would not be doing, micromanaging the dollars that they would have to expend. Obviously rent, obviously staffing come out across the board.
Jen, could you talk to us about, so if we're going to, if WK, I never get these acronyms right, WKCE. So are, are students at Pathway's taking the STAR test? What tests are they taking? Can you help us out?
Yeah, so they're taking all the state assessments. What has happened is that by naming a state assessment or a software tool, you know, once you change, then it's really outdated. And so currently, the state assessments are ACT, Aspire, we have Forward, but one year was WKCE, Badger, and now it's Forward for two years. Students at Star, at Pathway's are also taking the STAR assessment. That was one of the pieces that Becky and Anton shared out in that board work session about how their students are meeting that minimal growth expectation. So the students are taking the same assessments that are appropriate for each grade level.
So all we're looking to do is just say current state assessments as opposed to naming them? Okay. So, so like some of these are just really semantical changes. I'm not so sure that it's, needs to be arm wrestled, correct, everybody? Okay.
How about the addition on 7B, what Nancy's speaking to, in addition, any state or district mandated examination? I wonder when you look at 6B, the educational program at the charter school will be determined by the Governance Council in collaboration with Pathway staff and administration. At what point do you all have the autonomy to say, well, these are the assessments that we have, that we give to our students because they're state mandate, stand made, state mandated, whereas the district is saying, well, we want to be included on exams. Like, how is that?
The district mandated exam would be the STAR. But as far as common assessments, so for example, the ninth grade students at the high schools have certain common assessments that they're taking in their core area classes. We are not requiring Pathway to do those common assessments. But the, where, but if they, if those students were in those same classes at the high school, they would have to. What we are requiring is the STAR assessment, because that is our universal screener. And the, the purpose of the universal screener is, part of that is to monitor student progress across the board.
So according to 6B, the educational program at the charter school is still under the direction of the Governance Council versus the district, but the district has the ability to, to make requirements?
You are on, I'm sorry, you are on 6B or page six?
It's 6B, it must be page two, I think.
Okay, thank you. Underpaged. Correct. So Pathway's has a philosophy of project-based and personalized learning with a career focus and the focus of connection within the community to careers. And that would remain part of, that, that's under the Governance Council's jurisdiction for, or I don't know if I want to say, authority maybe would be the right word?
And then I would just say on page 11, 30F, in addition, the district and the charter school shall agree to propose language for a five-year renewal of the charter school contract. I know, Laura, you say this was added by Pathway. I don't know if you're in agreement with that. However, I would say it's just advanced planning, kind of like Tanya was alluding to. How can we blend these efforts so we have a long-term plan that's conducive to five years rather than this one very quick year?
Well, I don't know that we can say that we're going to, I don't know that we should be talking about a five-year renewal until we have the audit or the assessment. So I can appreciate your comment to say, I mean, maybe it just needs to be revised to say something pending, you know, negotiations. I don't know, Chris, you can probably come up with something legally.
Well, I think one of the things we need to, we need to take a look at, I understand the spirit of this and I think it's a good idea. In Wisconsin, this would be considered an agreement to agree in the future, which generally is unenforceable. But there are other ways we can talk about it, like we agree to sit down and in good faith negotiate. So I think we can get to the intent there. That was one of the items that I had as well. But I, I like, I like the spirit of that. We may need to just negotiate some of the wording a little bit on that.
Because ultimately, this decision doesn't come back to the board until December.
Nope. The, what, tonight is discussion. We would either, so the next board meeting is next week. If, if, if we could move rapidly enough to complete everything so that it was uploaded to board docs in a timely manner, then we, it could come to the board for a vote and approval of the contract on the 21st. Otherwise, we have three more board meetings. We have the 21st, we have June 11th, and then June 18th. June 18th for the, ultimately, the contract needs to come back to the board for a vote.
And I apologize, I misspoke there. I meant that looking at a five-year contract would not come back to the board until December of 2018 and then potentially January of 2019, when we review this assessment that we've been discussing from the previous five years.
So the, the assessment and the information about next steps relative to the assessment would come, the board would, this Board of Education would see that in July. Pathway should see it in earlier, before this Board of Education sees it. So prior to that. And that will spell out next steps. Then Pathway will act on those next steps and, and in December, we will sit down and see where we're at and see what the results of that is, are. Depends on the number of steps. And so we'll sit down in December. Then in January, the board would discuss whether or not, so the, and I may not have the wording exactly correct. The board would discuss whether or not the intention is to enter into a new five-year contract or something different from that. And so that discussion would occur in January. Then if the discussion were to be, we'd like to see a five-year contract proposed, Pathway and Governance Council would be working on proposing that then.
Chris, I think that language was partially in there because Pathway didn't want to jump through a bunch of hoops to find out that the district had no intention of renewing a five-year contract. But, but intention is what we're looking for there. So I'm not sure what else, where else we would go tonight. Yeah, some of our, the meetings with the Pathway Governance Council and the district have had some challenges on boiling down to some common agreement as we've really worked to try to keep things, again, as close to the original contract as possible, to then have the assessment period that we never had. That is still what we're going to be moving forward with and that is what we are going to try to present for a vote with a contract for, for next week. So we'll have to figure out how to make that happen. But I wanted to take this last opportunity to make sure I voiced what Pathway's Governance Council intention is as clearly as possible, so.
Hi, I'm Anne Marie Lancer and I'm also on the Governance Council Board. I would just like to ask, like, if the safety concerns and things like that, if those, sorry, I'm nervous. Like for this one-year contract, is the safety issue going to be a roadblock? Like, we need to go forward knowing that these last five years invested in this school that's providing such a great benefit to our district is not going to be lost because we're stuck on this one or two issues that we can work out. We can figure these things out, but we, this contract needs to be done. Do we have your support that Pathway is a benefit to our community? And let's just go with that for this week, for this contract and every, I'm, I have a son at Pathway. I'm concerned about his safety. I want Pathway to stay. I don't want Pathway to go away because we can't get this language correct. I don't want Pathways to go away because we can't get this language correct for this one-year extension. So I just want to make sure that you're really considering it's not just about all these details, because we got the details. The Anton and Becky are working every day on the details and reporting to you and reporting to the district, and then the heart is there, the, the foundation is there, the research that has gone into building this. I don't want that lost because we're stuck on a couple of things.
I just want to make a comment. I did have one of your board members reach out, and I just have, I have one question and one comment. I just think, as a board member, I am supportive of the Pathway School and what it does for the students that attend, and I've been here, heard some of your stories. I do have one question on enrollment, on why it doesn't seem to have hit projections that were set for the five years that you're, you're doing that. And if, if you agree that they're both projections, what can we do to get more students to attend?
Well, I can say, I can say that this year is going to be a rough year because we've been on hold for a year. We've lost leader, we've changed leadership, and we have no, our marketing committee hasn't been working because we didn't know if there was support for us even to continue. Do we go out to the parents and to the, to the fifth and sixth graders and tell, this is what we have, and then yank it away? So that's a tough one. I don't know, in the past, you know, in the years previous, how the projections were expected versus what developed.
I can speak a little to what I know, you guys jump in, but what, what I learned from working with the Pathways team is that at the beginning, students would enroll and then maybe not enroll, and they would, you know, go to Badger or the high school. But since then, there's been like a commitment, a contract, right, that students complete and sign, and then they stay there for the entire year. But overall, from the very beginning of the intention of the enrollment, the numbers are who's there with the third, you know, the second Friday and January count. But they can speak to more of the commitment letter that is now involved.
Well, also, I'd ask about the retention. So I started in seventh grade. Am I still there four years later, five years later?
I would say as far as retention, when the school opened, students that enrolled were often students just looking for an alternative, no matter what that alternative was. And we have worked really hard, especially in the past year, to market appropriately and correctly to our students. We have put in place new requirements for students to enroll, that they have to attend specific meetings and get the correct information, so that we are marketing the correct information to those correct students. And since we have put that in place, especially with our younger levels, because those are the ones we marketed to last year and a little bit the year before, the retention rate in our younger grade levels is much higher, so we are finding success in that new marketing strategy.
That was also part of the, the first couple of years as Pathways was new to the community, not everyone understood what it was. Like Becky said, the kind of students that came in, maybe it wasn't the right match. So there was a complete marketing overhaul to make sure it was the right match, but so the numbers were, you know, shuffling here, and then as it worked to get the right student in, suddenly we had all the right students, but the number shifted down a little bit. And then we had a specific marketing goal the next year to raise enrollment by 10 to 15 students, and we met that goal. And this year, again, without a contract and knowing if the school was going to exist, the, the marketing has been just less aggressive. So I'm really hoping that as we reestablish the future of Pathways here, as it's been very precarious, and still is, that we will see that go up as we get, get back in that momentum that we started to create a year and a half ago and didn't quite get a chance to flesh out that whole marketing plan. But the students that are there are really happy in what they're doing, and it's the right place.
I just want to speak to the, the long-term. So at a, an earlier work session, you had asked about the cohort piece, and so just asking about the long-term piece of students enrollment. So like they had said at the beginning, you know, the students were trying to find the right fit, but in the information that I shared with everyone today, the first year of Pathways in 2013, 14, when you look at different grades, so in, for ninth graders, there were 13. Out of those 13 students, by the time they were juniors, there was three remaining, and then those three went on to be seniors at Pathways. And then from the first year, there was 21 eighth graders, and of those 21 students, the next year when they were 10th graders, it was, or ninth graders, it went to 10. And then as 10th graders, we had eight, and then for junior year, five, and then 17, 18, four. And so just that's a little bit of the enrollment piece, long-term of like when students start, are they continuing on in Pathways? The other piece I wanted to just share and highlight really is about enrollment, talking about getting the right students there. And currently, right now, we have 60 students there, and when we look at students of all their needs, it's really important to meet all their needs. And so currently, with the 60 students that we have there, 25 of them are identified as having an IEP for special education, or a 504, or any other health plan, or mental illness. That's the 25 students there, and so they have other health needs.
So are we able to adequately help those students if they're not at our main buildings? If, if they have these alternate needs?
Becky and Anton can speak more to the, like, how they structure their morning. Previously, in a work session, they did talk about how the students go to Badger or the high school, like, in the morning, but they can speak to that. But as we talk about the enrollment and getting the right kids there, I just want to make sure that we know, you know, who is there that we are serving.
I mean, 25 out of 60 is a fairly significant percentage number that have. So I'd like to hear from you.
25 out of 60 is definitely a significant number. It's 42 percent, and the district average is not that high. I feel that students who, especially students who have mental health issues, do come to us because they find it to be a more safe environment where we are, and those social pressures are gone, which is one of the things that we do provide for those students. As far as special education and those services, those services are provided during their elective periods while they are at Badger or while they are at the high school. So, for example, a high school student on an IEP, their coordinator is, one of the coordinators through the high school and meets with them during those class periods. So we do not have a special education staff member on site, but we follow all of the special education IEP plans that come out, and we attend every meeting.
So Laura, how does that differ from what would happen at Badger?
So it's based on the students' IEP goals. So the core classes are at Pathways, and based on the students, if they're, if they're, the reason they have an IEP is an emotional behavioral disability or a learning disability, those are addressed differently. And so it's really challenging to say how that would be different because it's based on the specific IEP goals. So sometimes that is direct support from a special education teacher in the classroom while instruction is going on. Sometimes that is, so if you had, if you were, were identified with a learning disability in the area of mathematics, your special education supports and goals would be identified within the IEP. Those supports and goals may be delivered in the regular education setting as well as a special education setting based on what the child's, what needs are, what supports are needed. So for example, we may have a sped teacher that goes into the regular ed and is team teaching with a regular education teacher. And we may have a special education teacher that, based on an individual child's need, is removing a child for a portion of the math lesson. So they may be there for the, for the, the whole group part, but then for the small group part might be out. Or they may be, the special education teacher may be pre-teaching what's going to happen in the classroom. The child is then in the regular ed setting the whole time without support, or may have support during the small group period, period. So it can look very different. But if, like, for example, if they're IEP in mathematic, if they were identified with a specific learning disability in the area of mathematics, you would expect some of that support to be during mathematics instruction as well.
So I guess I'll ask you again. So obviously, I'm not an educator, but if you have a student who needs these type of specialized services, how are they getting them then if you don't have a special education teacher or someone, you know?
I'm going to jump on that a little bit.
Yeah, someone help me out here.
I would want us to review that. So with Sharon Kales here, I would ask that we, we, as a team, sit down with the, the specific IEPs to make sure that the services are being delivered in a way that ensures that the child's IEP goals are being met.
Yeah, I guess that would be a question. So I mean, if I have a student with severe needs, would, would we as, or you, as a charter school, say, I'm sorry, we can't meet your needs at our school, and say no to them?
That's always a possibility. If, if we can, we have to look at the least restrictive environment. And so we also need to look at, are there just accommodations that we should be putting in place?
Okay.
And so that, those are the two things. Like, are there accommodations we can make? Is this the least restrictive environment for the child? And as far as us assigning a staff member, like, if it was as simple as that, that should happen, if it was as simple as that. With 25 students on either, on some kind of specialized plan, I would imagine that they are incredibly different plans, and that some of those really are about social emotional supports, and Becky has addressed that.
Well, I'd like to see us give the charter school the tools they need to succeed and not look for places to, you know, put roadblocks in place. And I think, you know, if we're concerned about enrollment, as I heard was expressed, if I were a parent, I would have concerns about enrolling my child in the Pathways Charter School if there wasn't some certainty that, that mode of education would continue. Students, young people, I think most of us succeed with some certain semblance of routine, and making changes year after year, that, that has negative impact on education. So I would like to see us put in place some tools for the Pathways Charter School to succeed, and that would be to extend this contract a year.
Anyone else with questions? That's all I was.
I was just going to say, first of all, thank you to the members of the Governance Council and to staff for everything you do for the school and for coming here tonight and for the contract negotiations. You know, sometimes, everyone knows I'm a lawyer, and sometimes these contract negotiations, not fun. But I really appreciate it because the more that we work out these differences, that saves us from having disagreement during the life of the contract, which is even worse. And so thank you for that, and thanks to administration for that. I'm hopeful that both parties can come and look at this in good faith, and just as Mr. Schmidt said, we move forward so we can give you folks some certainty. I am supportive of that idea and look forward to, to the next version of the contract.
And I would just say one, thank you for answering my question on enrollment. It was more of, how can we help you? I'm in, in support of your mission and the students that go there, so that was the spirit of the question, and I, hopefully, we come to agreement on the one-year and the five-year plan.
So next steps would be for district staff and, and Pathways to come together again and sit down and go through that. If that, so board docs, we would want to, essentially, we would be sharing a new contract, so the, potentially, we could wait till Thursday, like, that meeting would need to happen by this Thursday, like, everything tied up by this Thursday to get it on the agenda for next Monday. So we can make whatever efforts necessary to do that. We'll have to see schedules, we just will. And, but that's next step. So either the 21st or the 11th, you would see a revised contract back to the board.
Well, I would just encourage everyone to, you know, sit down and have an open mind. You know, I realize, as Chris said, contracts are sticky, but we have to do this right. And so, you know, I mean, the whole art of negotiation is that you all walk away semi-happy, not everyone's happy. So we all give a little, and we all get a little. So I would encourage administration and Pathways to sit down as soon as possible so we can get this cleared up for you, and then you can get your marketing efforts kicked off and hopefully enroll 50 new kids, so. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to committee reports.
The board's work session on April 30th, and the board...
I know, I don't, I don't have any notes either.
They were all on board governance, on committee schedules and...
Okay, okay, I can talk about that a little bit then.
The second one on April 30th was actually, the majority of that meeting was, Mr. Johnson from school.
Got it, okay. Okay, so on the 23rd, we talked pretty extensively about our board makeup of committees. In the past, we've had several different committees, and our board has decided to, help me out if I'm not saying this correctly, look at going to more work session style meetings where more, it's a meeting of all of us so that we can all have an opportunity to discuss things. What was happening in the past was that there were a lot of meetings that were back-to-back or at exactly the same time. So for instance, if you were on policy, that met at the same time as curriculum, so you were not able to attend both meetings, and there were a lot of, you know, a lot of good information that you might miss. We're hoping that what it will allow us to do is streamline some, some of the processes that will happen, and the full board will get that information. And then when we actually come to a board meeting, it's more of a quick review or an executive summary of what's happened in the board work session. We will be keeping policy as a committee, and Mr. Zweigert will be chairing that committee for us, and I believe it's Joel and Tiffany also on that committee, and then other board members are allowed, as always, to, to come whenever they'd like. So that's really the makeup of that meeting. We also talked a lot about just the role of the board and, and how we want to proceed. And then our second meeting on the 30th was in regards to the survey for the potential updates to Jackson and the high school. So we spent a lot of time going over questions and reworking those questions and rewriting those questions multiple times, and I think we have a nice document that will be, it's not available yet, is it?
So it was revised? At the last board meeting prior to approval of the survey, you did revise it. It has been revised to address the meeting that was discussed here in the board, in the board room. And so that's, School Perceptions is working now on getting that out.
So the goal is to get that out. It will be available online?
It will be available online, and if you, for our public, if they are not able to complete it online and would like a unique one sent to them, they will be able to contact, contact the district office to do so. Each, each one has, each residence will be mailed an individual code, and each person can take the survey one time.
I think the real message from the board is that we hope to have very, very high participation because we really want to hear from the people in our district about the questions that are on that particular survey. Again, we spent a lot of time going over what were the right questions, so we really hope to get much better than what the average school district receives. I think the response is like 18 percent. I, I would love to see us over that 35 percent mark, that would be great. Even getting to 50 would be amazing. So we're very anxious to hear from the public, so please take a few minutes. And again, if you're not able to fill it out online, you should contact Deb Wrench, and she'll be happy to just mail one right out to you as quick as possible. Looks like our next topic is board meeting calendar, Laura?
So there will be special media, as there...
You posted already, correct, for tomorrow?
Yes. There's a special meeting of the Board of Education tomorrow to conduct superintendent interviews, and, and that is a closed session. There's also, those interviews are continuing tomorrow night and all day on Wednesday, so the board will be in session twice in closed session in order to conduct those interviews. And then following that, the next board meeting is next Monday, May 21st, a week from today, here at the ESC. We expect... We expect that the board will have some finalist candidates coming forward, so I would expect a couple of more closed sessions posted next week as the board is entertaining finalists for the superintendent position. A regularly scheduled board meeting, so that's kind of funny, are June 11th and June 18th. Again, next month follows a different pattern because of the board's commitment to allow participation of, for staff as well as the board in a community event on the 25th.
All right. I would entertain, unless somebody else has questions, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Students, if you have papers to sign, come on down, we'll sign those for you.